Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, May 8, 2023 Board of Selectmen FAA Capital Improvement Planning Committee Joint Meeting. As always, we'll call this meeting to an end, begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unless there's objection, I will chair the joint meeting, and the FAA Chair will be able to call a vote for FAA or any act of, any item separately. I see there's a beginning approved minutes, 424, 427, 428. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of April 24th, 27th, and 28th as written.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. All right, public hearing. This is a continuation from April 24, 2023, a poll hearing, National Grid Plan Number 30700647. Interval circle? Intervall? Intervall?
Intervale.
Intervale. Circle, National Grid, to install new underground construction. One three-inch conduit encased in concrete with new primary cable on Intervale Street Circle from existing transformer pad 3135-4 to existing primary pull box PB-1 spanning 250 feet. And open that hearing again at 6:36 PM. Can introduce yourself and...
Hi, my name is Will Fontaine. I represent National Grid. And since last time I did get some more information, I've been in contact with the Superintendent of the Highway Department. We talked about how this project will be digging up the road as there are driveways and yards between the pull box and the transformer we will be digging to. So we don't want to disturb anybody's private, private land there. So we will be digging up the road there for the 250 feet and installing the new conduit.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan?
To Jeff Murray. If they have a satisfactory remediation for when they're done, they're going to just come in and patch it, is it going to be?
Yes, the standards are laid out in the street.
Remember? It's a concrete case conduit which will, I assume, provide for a lot of support.
Yes, yeah, the civil contractors we use are always, they always have to restore to what was there before. So that's a standard, standard procedure for trenching in the road.
Chair, were they supposed to contact, I see one of the residents here, were they supposed to contact residents? Show them exactly what's going to be done, is that done?
I did, I got your information. I left a message for the one neighbor that I got contact information for. The other neighbor that was here last time never gave me his information, so I couldn't actually reach out to him. But I can answer any other questions now.
That gentleman have his questions answered?
Well, I don't think it's the same conversation we had, I don't think there's any work that's going to take place in the private way, so I think that was the main concern, and the other isn't.
I think so.
So I just want to say that they need an access, access agreement to the private property owner, private section. He's going to be an indication that it will only happen in public, but.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. Any other questions, either in the crowd or... No? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:38. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we approve the request by National Grid to install a new underground connection, one three-inch conduit encased in concrete, new primary cable on Intervale Circle from existing transformer pad 3135-4 to existing primary pull box PB-1 spanning 250.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. All right, let's see if I can square this away. We're going to reopen the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 warrant. And any remaining FAA Board of Selectmen budget warrant or capital improvement business is discussed and may be called by the Chair. Town administrator?
Mr. Chairman, we're going to start off with a copy of the warrant. I think everybody should have a copy of it in front of them. There's also an accompanying spreadsheet that I made, just for everyone's convenience, so that you can, it has a column that says my recommendation, the Board of Selectmen's recommendation, the FAA's recommendation, should be, so you can jot it down for your own personal records. So what we normally do is we go with the, for this one, with the exception of Article, Juice 3, which was voted at the last meeting, that's the contingent and non-contingent budget. We generally go through, usual procedure every year, we go through every article and discuss it. And at the end of the public hearing, when input is done, when discussion is concluded, we go through and have the FAA vote their recommendations. And the Board of Selectmen vote to place those articles on the warrant. So that I can go ahead and get it posted.
Did I open the public hearing? No. Just in case, I'll reopen the public hearing for fiscal year 2024 at 6:41.
Mr. Chairman, did we want to, did we want to finish up our capital improvement items? We can do it in any order that, everything you know is in a hearing, so we can do it in any order that you and Chairman Johnson would like.
Finish these up?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do it.
All right, where did we leave, we left off at the... On your ongoing regulatory and compliance mitigation response? Yep. So...
Actually, it's probably a good idea we can kill three birds with one stone that way. So that, that particular article is Article 7 in the warrant. FAA Board of Selectmen have a memo in front of them that show where we left off. And the number one, it says capital improvement completes their business, the remaining business is ongoing regulatory and compliance mitigation response for immediate response action issued by DEP and FY22. And that request is actually going to be in the amount of two hundred... Two hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. I'm requesting that in the form of an article for the treasurer to borrow for, and we would budget for the repayment on the loan. And that is to cover the costs associated with the immediate response action that we've had issued by the DEP after testing the groundwater in and around the cap landfill. We're in negotiations with Gentex, we're also under the same immediate response action to pay for a portion of private well testing out into the Eagle Drive area. If you go to... If you take a look in your packets, I provided some background information. It's under the, in the OneDrive, it's under Regulatory and Compliance DEP, under the Packet folder. It has the town's IRA plan. It has Gentex's IRA plan. And it has what they call an RNF, which was written to show how the town is going to respond to their immediate response action. I'm not sure, we've been talking about this for over a year now, I'm not sure how deep into the weeds I should get with it. I'm happy to start wherever the consensus is for me to start to explain the background as to what's going on there. While you're deciding, Amoresco, when I, when I came in as the new town administrator in 2019, we had a successful bid in a signed contract with Amoresco to place a solar array on our cap landfill. As part of that permitting process, DEP needs to sign off and permit that action to happen. When we went ahead and requested DEP's sign off for that permit, they requested our tests and inspections since the, since the landfill was capped. Well, there were no tests and inspections ever done, so we had to go back and provide tests and inspect the groundwater in and around our cap landfill. It came back with concentrations in PFAS and dioxide in 1-4, the groundwater tests that were performed. So that spurred, that spawned an immediate response action as a release for the town of Dudley to test 500 feet out, 500-foot bubble. That put us onto Eagle Drive. We tested the first well over there, it came back with a positive hit. That required us to provide bottled water at the town's expense. And as part of the response plan, we have to continue to test out until we hit a non-detect result. So every time we hit positive, we test out another 500 feet. The response in our, our action plan that was submitted to DEP is to immediately provide bottled water for a positive hit, put dioxide in 1-4 or PFAS. And then, within two weeks, get a plan together to install a filtration system into that home to filter the private well. So that continue, we got closer to Gentex, their property tested positive, they were under an IRA, immediate response action. So now we were in negotiations with Gentex, and we still are, so I don't want to go too far down the road and talk about the legal negotiation. But Gentex has agreed to pick up a certain portion of the Poet installation, that's the filtration system, and the ongoing remediation for all those properties, including changing filters out, repeated testing, and everything that's required. And so we have to keep going, every time we hit positive, we have to go out another 500 feet, test all the properties around 500 feet, and respond in the same way. To date, this started in '21, to date, I've been able to cover those expenses using federal money from the ARPA funds. When we declared that revenue loss, the federal government provided us with $3.6 million in ARPA funds, we've been using it for various things, this is one of them. To date, we spent about $500,000 in federal funds. Recently, we had to move the ARPA funds that remained, which was $166,000, out of the projected budget for FY24 and back into the '23 budget so that we could apply them to expenses that we exceeded in '23, for things like this, and some unanticipated repairs and staffing. So now, I'm requesting an article in which I would ask the treasurer to, the Board of Selectmen to approve, and the town meeting, meeting to approve the treasurer to borrow that $290,000 amount, and I would budget for the repayment. Part of the source of funding to budget that repayment can be found in the OneDrive under Cell Tower and Solar Landfill, and I think it's also printed in everyone's packets. It shows the Amoresco solar, is the first PDF in that folder. Amoresco will be, has, has actually gotten through now DEP. DEP has signed off on the initial permitting for that solar contract. And it will be in construction next August. And it shows the annual revenue that's projected from that solar contract to be about $64.5 for the next 21, 20 years, for a total of $1.2 million. And if you look back in that same folder, you'll see... Sometimes I got to be careful not to hit the wrong tab when we have to start from scratch. You look at diamond leasing in that same folder, it says Diamond Towers Cell Tower. That's another successful bid that we received. This has all been approved through, through town meeting and RFP, gone out to bid, and been received to construct a cell tower on the sewer pump station in the town-owned land where the sewer, Olds to Sewer Pump Station used to be. That source of revenue provides for an initial $100,000 payment, and by the way, this is going to be in permitting in July of this year. An initial $100,000 payment, so as soon as the permits are received for that cell tower, we receive $100,000. And then, for the next 20 years, including year one, we receive an annual estimated revenue of $20,000, $20,000, $21,000, $22,000, and so forth, all the way down to year 20, $35,000. That's an ongoing land lease agreement. It also provides for any additional providers or carriers that are put on that tower. So for example, this is, this is the base contract, if they come in and they lease it out to different carriers, I don't even know if Sprint exists anymore, but Sprint and Verizon, AT&amp;T, we get 50% of that lease agreement, and Diamond gets the other 50%. So, long story short, I'm asking to borrow, to borrow the money, that $296,000 through this town meeting article, and the source of funding to repay that loan would be these revenues and/or I would budget for it in subsequent years when the money, when the money is borrowed. We have that regulatory and compliance line item, it's less in the, in the non-contingent budget. That's if the override fails, it's, it's a lower amount, and it's, but I don't think it would even do this year if we borrowed for it in the same fiscal year, we probably wouldn't see, have to make the first payment to the following fiscal year. And if, and if, if the override were to pass, we'd have that additional budgeted amount in regulatory and compliance of $65,000. We would subsidize the rest of it with these, with these new revenues to pay off the note. It's a lot in a short amount of time for me to explain, but if you have questions, we can start peeling away at the onion. And this has been ongoing since '21.
So, so is this the total? Is this, is this all the affected houses, wells? Or is there going to be additional?
This is what we have, this covers us for FY, this covers us for FY24. We think before FY24 is completed, we'll be done with negotiating with Gentex, and we'll have a better plan. This keeps the Poet systems installed, keeps testing, retesting, mitigation ongoing. It keeps us in good graces with DEP for FY24. The ultimate solution would be a water line, but we haven't done a cost benefit analysis to try to figure out what's the better investment, ongoing maintenance of filtration systems or the installation of a, of a water line? I know water line makes the situation disappear.
Right.
But a water line is multiple years versus this, but we have to do this under that order.
This maintenance you're talking about, what is, is this?
So you've got to change?
Forever?
It's forever, until we come up with a better idea. That's why we want to really take a look at what the, what the cost of a water line would be versus forever maintenance on these systems. It's not as simple as just providing bottled water, we have to, you know, we do that initially, like immediately when there's a positive detect. We give bottled water, and then we have to move forward with the filtration system or, or a water line. Those are the only two solutions, water line or filtration system.
And the state has no obligation to help us in this? Didn't they, they declared it a brownfield, don't they have any obligation thereafter?
Nope. We have town, the town council's been working on this for a year. So it's, I know that for a fact.
And how many, how many of these wells we, these water filters we're putting in with this?
This assumes 52 homes. And it's probably 70 plus total. But Gentex is picking up some of the cost of these homes, and we're going to get to a point where we're, we're both in it evenly. Chairman, do you want to? Hold the CIP vote on this motion?
Yeah, you want a CIP on this first, right?
I'd want to, yeah, sure.
To add this to the...
We could do CIP, we've discussed it, and we can go back to it when we look at the warrant articles through FAA and Board of Selectmen. But we've already, we're having a public hearing now, so we can, I guess we could just go ahead and ask all the questions.
Oh, so, okay, so do all the votes after the, after the...
Yeah, yeah, because we can't vote, we got to close the hearing.
So get through, get through the whole hearing.
You don't want approval on CIP first?
We have to move out of, we have to move out of the hearing, so.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Our rest of them aren't quite as good, so we might as well. Would you need a little amendment?
I've got the column.
Oh, yeah.
You got the memo.
Is this the cruiser update?
Yeah, the cruiser update from the police chief.
I'll call Chief up to give us a little update on that. The Chief, you want to give us a little update on the cruiser?
Just a quick, I believe in 2021, we got approved to purchase three cruisers and a police vehicle for the chief. Just to give you a little background, in 2021, Ford Explorer was $59,539 to outfit. Since then, it's gone up to 64, 678. And in 2023, they anticipate an eight to 10% increase for the Ford Explorers. So we, we purchased two of the cruisers, there was about a year wait for the cruisers when we initially purchased the first cruiser. I was notified that they had a leftover, which I took advantage of and took, reserved it for us. Since COVID was lifted a little bit, the, the time to outfit a cruiser is a little quicker. So we did take a delivery of a second vehicle, a little quicker than we thought we were going to anticipate on. And the third vehicle, we're going to hold off for at least a year before we get a quote for that vehicle. The last three vehicles we've gotten are hybrids, and we've gone, we've spent a lot less gas on them, I anticipate. As long as the numbers stay low, our last vehicle will also be a hybrid. But at this point, I don't have a quote for the next vehicle, it'll probably be a year from now. Questions?
Any questions for the chief? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the road betterment, capital improvement projects for Tobin Farm Benefit, which was approved at the town meeting at 401,000. which was approved at the town meeting at $401,000. You want to take that first, Mr. Administrator? Do we need to do anything with this?
Mr. Chairman, could we ask the highway superintendent to back me up on these a little bit? So as we know, the road betterments are, the process is that we, we get a cost estimate to better these roads. We present it to the 50% or more of the voters if they are good with it. We go ahead and we complete the road betterment. The money's borrowed and it's repaid through betterment assessments only to the people who live on that road. So the road betterment, the road betterments that we're talking about tonight, one is Tobin Farms. Town meeting approved $401,000 for that project. St. Anthony Road is now in the queue. It's on the warrant to get voted on to pursue a betterment. And the estimated cost on St. Anthony Road is $73,224. Again, these are, these are actual numbers assessed to the residents of these roads in order to pay the, pay the projects off.
Tobin Farms was already, was already approved, right? We already approved that one?
Tobin Farms was approved. I don't think we had the exact final number, but this is pretty, 401 is still standing, right, Jeff? Okay. So that's the final number on Tobin Farms. And the estimate for St. Anthony's is $73,224.
Any questions on any of these road betterments? You mean the CIP, FAA, Board of Selectmen? Anybody? Okay, we'll move on. I think we do, we already, we already approved this, right?
See, I was gonna ask you, through you, Mr. Chairman, maybe through Rich, if we should, if this requires capital improvement, the feasibility study. Like, that's why I put it on, just to be on the safe side.
Even if the vote is advisory, the, we have the, the assent. There was a separate email chain that went through. Town Council had started some of the question, and Bond Council had been engaged. And I think everything has been refined as far as what the town needs to do. Any suggestion for the school committee? Again, this is moving forward in a friendly manner. So we'd, we'd want the vote, even if it's just advisory after the fact, but yes.
Okay. And so the source of funding, Mr. Chairman, would be a ballot question for a one-year capital outlay. Pay for that $463.
Same as we discussed last week.
Same as what we discussed last week. Bond Council is, Rich mentioned, Mr. Chairman is...
Thursday.
Thursday. It seemed like just yesterday. Bond Council came back, and I probably missed the email just before the last meeting started. We're gonna tweak, I'm gonna ask the board to tweak the ballot question just so it makes, meets the Bond Council standard. It's no change in the intent of what was voted initially. Town Council had reviewed the initial ballot question. Then we put it through Bond Council, and they tweaked it even further, so. That'll be on later tonight.
Now we have to go back and do the warrant articles?
If there's nothing else I can, any questions I can answer for capital improvement, I'm happy to do it.
Are you looking for an overall vote on all of these? To the capital plan?
I think we want to do them one at a time, Mr. Chairman, after, after the hearings closed.
So you want to do, you want to do the articles first?
You might as well continue with the hearings seeing we're in it. I mean, we can take all the votes with the cap.
Yeah, let's, let's finish, let's go through the warrant. All part of the open discussion with the...
All right, we'll come back.
And then we'll go back and look at the individual...
All right.
Votes. We have CIP votes, we have FAA votes, we have Board of Selectmen.
Lot of moving parts tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you can do, yeah.
All right. Maybe I'll pick on the clerk, we'll see. So what's, what's the recommended way to do this? Just read it and say, hold for more discussion? Or if there's no questions?
I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be, yeah, I mean, that's a good place to start, Mr. Chairman. You can ask for input on each one. I think we generally, we would anticipate, with the exception of Article III, which has already been voted and approved by FAA and Board of Selectmen. If you'd like the, if you'd like, I can read it and say what my recommendation is, and then we could call for a hold, or we could wait until someone puts a hold on it and we'll pull it that way.
Is everyone okay with that? If there's any questions on, want any more detail than the packets you have in front of you, give me a wave or a shout probably if I don't see, and we'll stop and have the discussion. If not, I'll just keep going through them and I'm sure we'll find some sticking points somewhere. Article I, Town Reports, to see if the town will vote to receive the reports of several town officers, and all committees are taking any action relative thereto. Any questions? Okay, Article II, Hear Committee Recommendations, to hear and act on the recommendations of Board of Selectmen and the Finance Appropriation Advisory Committee or take any other action relative thereto. Article III will be the fiscal year 2024 budget to see if the town will vote to determine the sums of money the town will raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds. Later, it talks about the contingent appropriations be appropriated from the tax levy contingent upon the passage of Proposition 2 and a half ballot question pursuant. General law is Section 59, 21(c). So you've all had that in front of you, right? This will be made available to the public, correct?
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay, any questions on that? Done a bunch of these. This has the latest data plugged in.
One quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, did Jonathan, did the Senate numbers come in at all for the, for the assessment for the school?
I haven't heard, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing?
I had my, my nose in the screen today. I haven't talked, spoken with the administration, but I haven't heard anything.
Nothing from the governor at all? We don't know?
Nothing. Thank you.
Article IV, Authorized Revolving Funds, to see if the town will vote to establish fiscal year 2024 spending limits for revolving funds set forth. So there's a list of the usual authorizations for revolving funds. Everyone has it in front of them. Article V, Fund Recertification or Real Estate
What's, what's the source of funding on this, John?
My recommendation is that we pass this over till October. We generally do that with these articles. And use free cash, we see a little grant with free cash in October.
Article VI, from the Board of Assessors, Fund Cyclical Inspections. And that is for the cyclical inspections of all properties in town that have not been inspected in the last 10 years.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, that would be the same recommendation to pass over until October.
Article VII, Regulatory Compliance Mitigation Response. This is what you were talking about earlier, right?
That's what we discussed previously, correct.
Article VIII, Town Accountant Unpaid Bills of Prior Year, just two?
Just two, Mr. Chairman. And my recommended source of funding, seeing that we're applying free cash to both the contingent and non-contingent budgets, be to either pass over until October, leave them unpaid, or if the committees feel differently and the board feels differently, to take out a stabilization. Those are our only two options in the ass. It might have, oh, it shows the four-fifth majority required for that. That would be fine for stabilization if we had to apply that.
John, how old are these bills?
22. FY22. Now fiscal year 22 or calendar 22?
One of each.
One of each.
Mr. Masser?
Well, we can't not pay our bills.
How, how long will Staples' postponed his bill?
I mean, a two-point receipt. I'm not trying to remind them of it, but... Carper Care, by the way, that's, a question came up from one of the members of the board about human, Human Resources article, I think, has five grand in it. It's one of the line items in the override passes budget. Carper Care is actually for employee physicals, testing, that sort of thing. So if we hire anyone, public safety or an admin assistant, they go for a pre-employment physical and screening. And that's what that line item, that's one of, that's one of the things that that line item in our budget funds for Human Resources is, pre-employment physicals and ongoing.
It's part of the required onboarding? Article IX, High School Feasibility Study. We just talked about that, right?
Correct.
Article X, Agricultural Commission. $1,500.0 to be added to our account.
And a recommendation would be to hold until October on that one as well, Mr. Chairman.
Article XI, Accept a Portion of Partridge Hill Road.
So that's another success story, Mr. Chairman. Partridge Hill Road Betterment has been completed. Now it's time to go through the town meeting for acceptance as a public. That's what we're asking here in Article XI.
Article XII, Board of Selectmen Highway Commissioners, Highway Superintendent, St. Anthony's Road Betterment. We just talked about that as well, right? Article XIII, Town Clerk Bylaw Amendment, Unvaccinated Dogs and Cats. Any questions on that?
Just breaking out one word?
Changing the word.
Changing the word first to last. Article XIV, Town Clerk, amend Chapter 255, Section 6, Erosion and Sediment Control Waivers of the Bylaws, there's a Scribner's error. Date certain. You should read a certain date, but there's a Scribner's error. Any questions? Article XV, Town Administrator, Grant Board of Selectmen Authority to Provide Residents with Option of Reduced Cost for Energy.
Mr. Chairman, we've had a lot of discussions. We've had a lot of feedback, especially when we were back in the house over the winter, that National Grid was gonna spike their rates up to, what did they say, 50% or 60% over the winter? And that caused a lot of outcry as to how come other towns can negotiate a lower pricing for their residents. So Michelle spearheaded this, and she contacted some surrounding towns, got the information from them, and we've been in contact with the Commonwealth. This is the first in several steps to get us to be able to negotiate a lower price for the residents. It starts with a town meeting approval, granting the authority of the Board of Selectmen, and then, of course, you delegate it to me and Michelle to set up the meetings that are appropriate to negotiate a lower price. And before any of this is done, there's several public meetings, information, informational meetings that are held so that everybody knows how the program works and knows the different sources of energy that are applied, and it knows what the town's priorities are. It gets input from the, from the residents to say if their priority is greener energy or it's cheaper energy or a combination of both, and that sort of thing. And then the final step, when it, when we get to that point is that people actually have to opt, opt...
In or opt out?
Opt in or opt out of the program. And they can cancel at any time. So if they say this is a ripoff or they don't think it's the right way to go, it doesn't fit their needs at any time. Unlike a solar contract that we sign to buy credits and everything, it has a, it's a, it's a incement contract. You can't change it for a long period of time without... They can opt out of it at any time, even if they don't like it after a while. So it's a good program, and it works for a lot of other towns, and it's time that, you know, we, we use our ability to negotiate better pricing for residents in this manner.
Bring it to me, Mr. Chairman.
Article 16, Planning Board, Update Flood Plane Bylaw and Maps.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, these planning board articles have all received a hearing and have been discussed at the planning board level. So my recommendation is to refer them back to the planning board for their recommendation And it's the same, Mr. Chairman, for Article 17, which, which was deliberated by the planning board, and they held a hearing to cite plan reviews, zoning amendment. Zoning amendments require a two-third majority vote. Article 18, Mr. Chairman, is the same thing. Shared driveway standards, that's been deliberated and voted on at the planning board level. The Battery Energy Storage System, Mr. Chairman, is Article 19. Again, planning board has held meetings and hearings I'm doing this because it's about four pages in between every single article, just to make it...
The scrolling is, I'm getting there. Article...
One time we take the papers.
Yeah. Any questions on that? Give you a few minutes.
So, Mr. Chairman, Article 16 through 19, just to make it clearer for everyone, have received hearings at the planning board level and deliberated at the planning board level. So my recommendation is to refer them, ask the Board of Selectmen to refer the article back to the planning board for a recommendation to town meeting voters. That's Article 16 through 19. No, we're on 20?
Yes, 20. Citizens Petition, Joe Andradevich, Zoning Change on Oxford Ave.
Generally with citizen petitions, and it stands for this one, Mr. Chairman. And we're gonna ask that we refer this not to the planning board, but refer it back to the...
Citizen.
To the petitioner. So we'll make that adjustment on the draft that we, that you have in front of you tonight.
I saw, wouldn't the planning board have to hold a public hearing on that anyway?
I believe they have.
And what did they say, Mr. Chairman?
My recommendation, refer it to the actor to petition.
Article 21, Water Sewer Commissioners, Authorize the Dudley Sewer Assessment Management Plan Project.
This does not, I asked town council today, this is a study of, this is a study to study a study. It doesn't require capital improvement, but I would refer it back to the commissioners to make a recommendation at town meeting.
Funding source?
Exactly.
Article 22, Town Clerk, amend Chapter 255, Section 6, Erosion and Sediment Control Waivers of the Bylaws, another Scribner's error. Let's repeat. Let's repeat.
Yeah, that's a repeat.
See, the groundhog's there, a repeat.
So that one, Michelle, was going to stay in because that received by the council... That received review that Laurie just got back from town council. The one above it will remove.
Article twenty-three, Town Clerk, amend chapter 128, animals, 128-4. Delete, strike through, and adding the bolded. So that's...
That's a repeat.
That's a repeat, too.
Scribbler's error, one, yeah.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
About half as many articles now.
It's good.
Article twenty-four, Town Clerk, amend chapter 203, lakes and ponds. It's like we're crossing out age limits for operation of a motorboat. Changing under ten years of age to under twelve years of age. Must accompany by an eighteen-year-old or older. Yeah, sorry.
Michelle tells me that makes it consistent with state law.
All right, we're making it consistent with state law. Both sections A and B, and C, and D. Looks like adding E, and then updating the speed limits. So that just matches state law?
Correct.
That's it, right?
Yeah.
All right. Anyone want to go back to any of those articles? Seeing none. So now we go into... So I'm closing the hearing. Closing the hearing at seven twenty PM.
So CIP, CIP first?
Capital Improvement Votes to Approve Updated Capital Improvement Plan and Present to Board of Selectmen. Must vote on each remaining item separately, a memo provided.
So, Mr. Chairman, chairmans, chairman, in your packets, there's a updated memo. It's dated May eighth. It's from the Capital Improvement Committee through the Board of Selectmen. It's in there, right?
Sorry, what folder was it? That's just the memo, right?
It's just the memo.
The one we've been using as...
No, there's another one that would have been updated to me. Michelle's going to get you a clean copy, but...
That's the one I have in front of me.
Same one?
Yep, same one.
Right. Pated May fourth, I'm hearing.
May...
Okay, perfect.
So, John, we've got a bunch of these that we've already approved on the first meeting.
Right.
So should I just... We only got four or five of these to go through for capital improvement to approve. You want us to approve the... We'll prove these items?
The ones that we did tonight.
The ones we did tonight, and then we'll let FAA...
We've had separate votes, Mr. Chairman, for each one, right?
Yes.
Because required to have separate votes for both CIP and capital improvement.
Yeah, okay. And so why don't I... Why don't we...
Rich has something, Mr. Chairman. These votes are really important in the way they're structured.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Let's wait till Michelle comes back. All of the compliance is, how did we get there? Capital Improvement goes through, reviewed an article. A member made the first and the second, and it was voted in the affirmative. Added to the... Added to the plan in its entirety at the end, and then accepted by the Board of Selectmen. There's going to be some other contingency votes as are necessary, depending on what the expenditure is, but it's... Would be rather...
So you want to go finish what we didn't? Is that what you said?
Absolutely.
Individual one? Didn't we're waiting for Michelle?
Did they close that already? You didn't close that meeting?
We didn't close. We just...
Mr. Chairman, I think you've already voted at the last meeting, so where we picked up is where we left off tonight, right? So we want to make sure those remaining votes individually voted.
Right.
And then that memo can be presented to the Board of Selectmen.
While we're waiting for Michelle, I'll go through real quickly the ones we did vote on for the Selectmen's purposes and for FAA's purposes, and then when she gets back, we'll continue on what we did. So at the last meeting, one of the capital projects was the Copper Pond Dam Engineering Design, which is ninety percent complete. EEA approved the design. Pirey Engineering submitted an application in the amount of $400,000 for the dam removal and demolition that's going to occur in 2024. We voted in affirmative for this to be on the capital plan. Four hundred thousand was grant... Is it grant fund, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay. The rail trail, some paving of the rail trails. There's about... There's $500,000 in a pending grant for the rail trails. We approved that one. EV charging stations, we scratched that one. We didn't... Did we vote on that one? We scratched it, Mr. Chairman. All right, so nothing on EV. The Brandon Road Mill Race Bridge Project. That was the demolition of the bridge. Demolition of the bridge, and it was funded by chapter ninety, $148,500. The master plan for $100,000 pending successful grant on that one. So you plan for a grant for that. Feasibility study behind the courthouse on Route 197, which is funded by Mass Development. That was $50,000, and that's also grant-funded. Airport Road, which is funded by the shared streets and spaces for $176,894.15. And we have the... Did we scratch this first half? John?
No.
We voted on that one, right?
Correct.
All right, yeah, the first half improvement project, just paved and funded by HUD through the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development. Through a fiscal year 2021, community development block grant for $558,500 for the entire project. The bid is opening... Bid opened on five-three. Is that correct? Five-three?
Yeah, that's when you opened, five-three. Correct.
All right. I think that's just in time for Michelle.
And then, Mr. Chairman, after we vote on this, the Highway Superintendent wants to add... Wants to just give you some information for the next capital improvement meeting, which will be in advance of the... Could be in September, that timeframe, in advance of the...
All right, so we'll add him after we get to the... Okay, so we already talked about the regulatory compliance mitigation for... Which is going to be Article seven, and the warrant for $297,690. If anybody on capital improvement want to make a motion on the mitigation?
There's a suggested motion there, too, Mr. Chairman. Find a memo.
Yeah.
I don't have the suggested motion.
Which memo? The one you just gave me?
That's the one.
Okay.
Do they have that?
They don't have it.
No, I only need a couple copies.
Okay, I'll get my copy.
Okay. Which folder is it?
Okay.
Is there anybody else on capital improvement? You have the copy of that for motion? Paul has it.
So we're looking for a motion for which one, Mr. Chairman?
For the mitigation.
Okay. Mitigation and compliance.
Second page, number one. Fifty-two water filters so far. Like that's what it was?
So what are we looking at? We need a motion for...
We need a motion.
For mitigation.
For...
To add the mitigation for the Eagle Drive, is that how you want to?
Yeah, the Eagle Drive.
For all the homes that are going to get the water filters, we need a motion from capital improvement to add that to the capital improvement plan.
Make a motion, 2024 capital improvement approval for mitigation. Did you actually...
He should have something written.
The suggested motion is, I move that the ongoing regulatory compliance mitigation in response for immediate response action be added to the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $297,690.01, with the source of funding identified as borrowing and budget appropriation to pay the note.
What he said. So moved. All right. Is there a second on that?
I'll do one.
Second, we have a second. Any discussion on what's going on with the mitigation? Anybody?
You have a motion? You have a second? Now is the time for debate. The town administrator had gone through and explained all of this, but again, if you call to the...
All right, if anybody has a question, discussion.
If there's a layer of detail, there's...
Anybody has any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Capital Improvement, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Uh, yeah, you can... You want to do... We're not doing anything with the cruiser, right? So you're doing road betterment?
Are we doing the cruiser or no?
It's a moot point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So now it's the road betterment. Road better Tobin Farms. So you want to read down?
I move that the Tobin Farms betterment be added to the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $558,500, with the source of funding identified as borrowing with the town be reimbursed for associated costs and debt through assessed betterments to the residents of Tobin Farms. Is that correct?
That's the correct number. Four hundred and one thousand.
It says town meeting approved a four hundred and one thousand, but the memo says 558,500.
Yep, you know, I've typed it.
Four hundred and one thousand.
Four hundred and one.
All right.
Disamend it.
I didn't make a motion, I just read it. So I'll read it again. I move that the Tobin Farms betterment be added to the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $401,000, with the source of funding identified as borrowing with the town to be reimbursed for associated costs and debt through assessed betterments to the residents of Tobin Farms.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this?
Actually, I just read it, so you wanted someone to say so moved?
I'll make motion. You said I move the beginning.
I did, okay.
Yeah, you did. So you do have a motion.
Paul's second.
Okay. Paul move.
Okay, there we go. Got that, Michelle? I'm just going to read them.
I'll move by Paul. Second and by.
Okay.
Too many moving parts here tonight. Is there any discussion on this?
A question on this. What happens, and I'm sure all the residents are for it or willing to participate in it, but what happens if you get all of a sudden a group that do not participate, and the expenditures have already been taken, the reimbursement doesn't come the town's way? If I'm getting that right, what happens then? Who... How do you get the money?
So how we got here? Fifty percent of the residents moved forward. It was placed on the town meeting warrant, was voted in the affirmative. So now things are moving forward. The road will be improved, the loan will be made, the assessor will go through and divvy up what should be paid, however, is it by linear feet or whatever the agreement is, per resident or... Anyway, the assessor will go through, give the option for a cash payment ahead of time or to take the betterment over the period specified. Value to pay is a tax lien. So in the worst-case scenario where no one paid, the town would have tax liens totaling X amount of dollars. But I think the town is at this point because a majority of people raised their hand and said, let's not drive over a poor road, let's have it improved, and ultimately get it accepted by the town.
Don't we put a municipal lien on the property?
Municipal lien is, the second, the assessors commit the tax bill to the collector to be collected. The perfection of the lien is my attestation being recorded at the Worcester Registry of Deeds that the taxes remain unpaid for the period specified.
So, George, Rich is going to send them a bill, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just now's a good opportunity to clarify that because some people seem surprised by it. We... This requires the residents to, on their own, to go out and recruit other residents, fifty percent or more on the street, and say, yeah, we'd like to pursue this betterment. We then have a series of meetings internally, but usually Jeff is here, I'm here, the town planner's here. We have them come in and they ask all the questions that they have. We answer as many questions as we can, and Rich has joined us for a few as well. With that, and we generally leave the meeting by saying, do you still want to go forward? Because we don't just put it on to the town meeting warrant. If you change your mind, come back. If you have questions, ask us. But it starts off with a petition of a majority of people on the street saying, yes, we want to move forward with it. Then it gets onto the town meeting warrant. Then the town meeting votes for it. So at any point, somebody has buyer's remorse or whatever the case may be, they can show up and vote against it. In this case, they didn't, it passed the town meeting. Now we move forward with the process. So it's not... It's not a surprise to anybody on that street.
I can't see it through. All right. Is there any other question regarding this? All right, we'll call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. We'll go on to St. Anthony Road.
I move that the St. Anthony Road betterment be added to the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024.
It is your amount.
In the amount of $73,224, with the source of funding identified as borrowing with the town to be reimbursed for associated costs and debt through assessed betterments to residents of St. Anthony Road.
I make a motion that the St. Anthony Road betterment be added to the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $73,224, with the source of funding identified as borrowing with the town to be reimbursed for associated costs and debt through assessed betterments to residents of St. Anthony Road.
You have a second, Paul?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Richard?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To the town administrator and the highway superintendent, this is the third road betterment. Again, following the very positive intake, more than fifty percent of the residents who'd gone forward. It doesn't have town meeting approval, but it's being put forward, almost at the request or the task that is sent by the road, more than fifty percent.
Correct. We had the same style meeting, residents came in. Again, this whole process is not driven by the town or any official, it's driven by the residents. They come to us with the petition, and that starts the process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Done, I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Ruth?
So next, sounds like you want us to, the board of selectmen to vote to accept the updated capital improvement plan?
I do. Mr. Chairman, the treasurer, do we want the board of selectmen to, to vote individually on these, or do we want to have them to vote?
You'd like the, my, my question was on D.
Yeah, do you want to, we're going to add the feasibility study for the load?
Oh.
To make sure we do that?
Add it, we decided to, going on it, we might as well add it to be on the safe side.
Probably this together.
For the capital improvement, you mean?
This still capital improvement.
Yeah. So we have the, the high school feasibility study that we've talked at length about, for four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars. Source of funding is going to be a capital exclusion question on the ballot. Does anybody on capital approval want to make a motion to add that study to the capital plan for the town?
I'll make motion. The high school feasibility study totaling four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars be added into the capital improvement plan. Source of funding would be borrowing contingent upon successful capital exclusion question.
All right, do we have a second for that? Okay, we have a second. Does anybody want to discuss the study any further?
John?
Looked like you want to say something. Nope.
The exclusion, I mean, is it one year, two years?
Rich?
Mr. Chairman. The motion that's on the floor is for a capital exclusion, one year only. So in fiscal 2024, four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars becomes a line item for payment to, very specifically, Dudley Charlton. The following year, it disappears. The savings is zero issuance cost, it is a, it is a budgeted line item. All you need to do is write the warrant, and the funds go out.
This is how you explain the, the town hall comes off after twenty years, one more year was the four-hundred-and-sixty, okay.
And we're working with the chairman on getting those, what happens if and then and together. Question?
How is Charlton's contribution decided in this? Is it per student, is it town population? What's their contribution?
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe for certain items, it's an October first date, as far as pupils per town, and it's divided up. Quick answer, I won't give enough.
For all the calculations, it looked like it was like fifty-four percent versus forty-six percent.
Correct.
Plus or minus a few.
We didn't get a graph on that one.
It's a dick.
All right, um, is there any other discussion on this study? I just want to make mention that, um, with this, with this study, we also, it's grant-funded, half of it's grant-funded, about fifty to sixty percent of it, so we'd be looking at, you know, coming, coming back to the schools to offset future assessments, but half of that's coming back, so, uh, not a bad, not a bad deal if we get in it right now, so. Any other questions on that one? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one name. Passes, okay. Well, that's it for our capital plan, where you said you've got the, the highway department wants to add something, or?
I think that the highway superintendent wants to add a couple of projects to your radar screen, so you'll have a chance that you can start sending.
We don't need voting on this one, just, just to know what's coming up.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we had a discussion, you wanted to remind me about thirty days in advance.
Yeah.
So I wanted to put this on the radar screen, so when we start submitting, casting for it, we'll be able to go on it, to move on it in advance, well in advance of the October town meeting.
Okay.
Did you want to come up?
You can, yeah, you can come up.
So, um, yeah, there's just a couple of items that I wanted to add, and they'd be chapter ninety funded projects. Two years ago, we actually submitted a, for review, a clamshell basin cleaner, and the cost has increased, so it would basically be an update to the cost of that, and we'd be looking at, at that. Also, a mini excavator, which would act as an offset for the local match portion of one of the grant programs that we've made application for, for the improvements to the rail trails.
Yep.
So a lot of these grant programs require local match, some of it, you know, usually in-kind, or some of them, some of them actually will allow equipment purchase, so we're, we're actually gaining the, gaining the capital through the chapter ninety purchase, but we're also offsetting what we would, would otherwise be out of pocket cost or in, in-kind cost. And then the, the third item would be another plow truck, just in anticipation of a two-to, two-and-a-half-year wait period for actually being able to purchase the cabin chassis and then have the outfit done, so. I would just need the approval to get that in motion and be able to get the truck on order so that we could have it. It wouldn't hit in the FY twenty-four period, more than likely FY twenty-five or possibly beyond at this point, it's tough to determine, but I have to, I have to put it in, in the site so that we know that we'll have that available. We're trying to maintain a routine five-year plan to update equipment, so.
So the plow truck, you, chapter ninety on that?
Correct.
Chapter, okay, and that's what?
So it would be one of the larger dump trucks, similar to the two that we've had on order for two years.
Right.
And we're currently awaiting for the delivery, so one of them, one of them will be ready in probably a week or two, and then the second, probably towards the end of July, possibly August.
Anybody, any, any questions for highway? All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, well, do you want to go from here, Mr. Administrator?
Will we go into number two on the, now? Board of Selectmen vote to accept the?
And just to clarify, borrowing for, Rich is borrowing purposes, Rich, you want an individual vote for each one, or do you want to accept the plan as updated?
With the most, Mr. Chairman, how are the motions written? No, no one will question anything if there is a, a motion read, a second, and an approval adding, it's added to. It's when it appears on a project, it appears on the plan, and there isn't that very clear line of it was presented but not specifically voted on, or maybe voted on it en masse, so.
So through the chat, Rich, you're just looking for them, for the board of selectmen to vote, to a motion to vote to accept the updated plan as presented in the memo tonight?
Maybe just for clarification's sake, we, we'd take a motion from a member of the capital improvement planning committee, just updating the plan with the following items.
We didn't do that, we did the individual items first, just probably want to do that one.
Yeah, but that was with their report, and we're just going to accept their report now, right?
Yeah, because we voted on each one individually.
We should just accept their report as voted on tonight. Is your motion?
I mean, everything's pretty clear right now, right?
It's just not money, you know, just accept.
Yeah, I think that's how it's always done, make a motion to accept. Plan as presented, voted on by capital improvement.
Make a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Board of Selectmen?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
All right.
All right, we're, we're getting, we're getting around second base.
Do you, do you want to go around FAA first to do all the articles, or you want to do this, we'll do FAA and board of selectmen at the same time? I mean, not at the same vote, but?
Well, the FAA makes his votes on a recommendation, and the selectmen vote to approve the article.
So you want to do all our recommendations first?
Yeah, that'd be good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, Article One, see if the town will vote to receive the reports of the several town officers, and all the committees will take any action there too. Relative thereto, is, do we have a motion from a member of the FAA on this article?
I move that the FAA vote in favoring of recommending Article One as printed in the May eighth, twenty-twenty-three draft town meeting warrant for the May twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting. And further authorize the town administrator on the advice of town council or bond council to modify the number of the article or make any legal corrections to the article text, so long as it does not change or modify the intent of the article as printed and recommended here tonight.
Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
You have a second, is there any discussion for Article One? None, seeing none, we'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, FAA recommends Article One. Article Two, um, here the committee recommendations to hear and act on the recommendations of the board of selectmen and the finance appropriation advisory committee, or take any action relative thereto. Is there any motion on Article Two?
So moved.
We don't need to read this up.
A second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Article Two? All right, seeing none, all vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, FAA recommends Article Two. Article Three was already recommended by FAA?
Yes.
Article Three has already been recommended by, by FAA in the previous meeting. So we'll bypass that. Article Four. Yeah, I got one here. Article Four, authorized revolving funds, to see if the town will vote to establish fiscal year 2024 spending limits for the revolving funds set forth in chapter thirty-four, section thirty-four dash five, authorizing revolving funds of the town's general bylaws as follows, but take any action relative thereto, and to dispense with reading the spending limits for all these accounts. Is there a motion for Article Four?
I move FAA vote in favoring of Article Four as printed in the May eighth, twenty-twenty-three draft town meeting warrant.
Hey, is there a second? You have a second, is there any discussion on Article Four? All right, seeing none, we'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, FAA recommends Article Four. Article Five is from the board of assessors, fund recertification of real estate and personal property, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of fifteen-thousand dollars, to fund the cost of the recertification of real estate and personal property values for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-eight, as required by the Commonwealth Department of Revenue. Is anybody, FAA want to make a motion?
Making motion to pass over to October.
Am I correct, Mr.?
Yes, please.
To October, okay. So we have a motion to pass over to October, is there any, is there a second on that?
A second.
We have a second, any more, any discussion on passing this over? Okay, seeing none, we'll call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So none, Article Five recommended for pass over by the FAA. Article Six is fund the cyclical inspections, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of twenty-one-thousand dollars, to fund the cost of the cyclical inspections of all properties in the town that have not been inspected in the past ten years for fiscal year 2024, as required by the Commonwealth Department of Revenue. We have a motion on this one.
Pass over to October.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussions on this one? All right, seeing none, we'll call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, FAA recommends that we pass over Article Six. All right, Article Seven is the regulatory compliance mitigation in response to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety dollars and zero cents, or some such amount to provide funding to design, test, install, and maintain water filtration systems for affected residents, as required under the immediate response and action issued to the town of Dudley by the Department of Environmental Protection. And to meet such appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow such sum under the, consistent with Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, subsection seven, or eight, or any other source or authority to issue bonds or notes that may be necessary to that purpose to take any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion on Article Seven?
Move the FAA vote in favor of recommending Article Seven as written in the May eighth, twenty-twenty-three draft town meeting warrant.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this? Discussion? John, just real quick again, can you give us a kind of an idea how we're paying for this, again, just a brief, what do you get lined up?
We're going to borrow the money because we can't come up with three hundred grand.
Right, but you said next year you got something else coming in possibly.
Spread it out, we're, we're going to budget to it, we're going to budget through, well, we did the right thing a few years ago, because half of our ground, our land lease stuff, whether it's for a cell tower or a solar array, goes right into capital improvement stabilization.
Right.
We can use that as a source of funding, and we can budget to it through a regular line item, for the regulatory compliance line item. And the same with the Ameresco payment that the town would be receiving. We get a hundred-thousand-dollar payment when permitting is completed.
When is that?
Cell tower, and that's going to happen in July. That's a signed, sealed, delivered contract.
So we get at least some of it, third of it anyway, right?
Correct.
And you said, but, you want to budget, you're not going to, this isn't in your budget, though, any of this?
Well, because I don't think we'll be paying for it till twenty-four, I mean, twenty-five. But there is a regulatory compliance line item.
Right, if, if, if the override pa, if an override passed.
In a little bit if it doesn't, so we have some money to pay for it, but we're talking about twenty-four, if, if it's borrowed, I don't see us making a payment till twenty-five.
Okay. Let's just hope a lot of people smoke somewhere along, some of that money coming.
You didn't even mention that.
Maybe you should, before we read about it.
What?
False numbers of weed money.
I don't have time for nonsense.
All right.
Always come to the meeting at the question, discussion.
Any, any discussion at all on that? Okay, uh, it's a call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Seeing none, FAA recommends Article Seven. Article Eight is these unpaid bills of a prior year, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds. raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety cents. Pay the unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year or take any action relative thereto. Does anybody have a motion on this one?
Make a motion to pass over to October.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second, any discussion on this? Okay, Mr. Administrator? Can we move the... Moving this to the fall? Be cash, I mean, I, I just don't want you to get collection letters.
I think that we've done enough business with Conpercare, I'm not, I can't speak for them.
What about Staples?
They're accredited, so.
Right, but Staples?
The same, I... I don't have a recommendation as far as moving, you know, paying out of capital.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions? Or any comments on this? All right, let's take a vote, all in favor say aye? Aye, all opposed? Okay, seeing none, Article Six recommend to fall, pass over to the fall.
Article Eight.
Eight.
Oh, Article Eight, sorry, my glasses are terrible. Article Nine feasibility study, high school, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, a sum of four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, or such, or some such amount for the cost associated with the town's allocable share of the cost of a feasibility study as required under Mass School Building Authority's School Building Grant Program, and as recommended by the Dudley Chauton Regional School Committee. And to meet said appropriation, such amount shall be raised in the tax levy subject to the favor bill vote by the town of a proposition two and a half capital outline exclusion ballot question, in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion for this.
Motion to vote in favor of Article Nine as written.
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second.
For discussion?
Discussion?
I'm told that if the school committee votes to include this in the assessment tomorrow night, that this article can come off the warrant, and we just send it right to the ballot board.
Yeah, because it's in their assessment, so it doesn't need to be warranted.
It's just, and that was Bond Council and Town Council saying the same thing.
Do we need, do we need to make it a conditional motion on this then?
No, because at the end I'm going to ask you to authorize me to make any changes to numbering of legal...
Okay.
Legal modifications without changing the intent of the vote.
Everybody understand how that works? If it's a capital assessment from the schools, it doesn't need to go, it just goes up on the ballot? Ross, did that exclude it? Okay. All right, any other, any questions on this? Any comments on it? Anybody? I'm just going to reiterate what I said the other night, three hundred and nine, three hundred, was it eighty-nine thousand coming off this building, which that we've been paying for for twenty years, that's coming off, we're not going to have to make that payment next year, so it's a very small increment to keep it, to get this, and it won't really change anybody's taxes whatsoever to take care of this, so I'm in favor of it. So I guess we'll call a vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All opposed, then Article Nine is recommended by the FAA. Article Ten is the Agricultural Commission to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of one thousand, five hundred dollars, to be added to their account for fundraising activities and events, to take any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion on this?
I have a motion to pass it over to October.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, we'll call a vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, Article Ten is recommended by the FAA. Article Eleven. John, you need a, you need a recommendation?
I, I struggle with these, Mr. Chairman, because technically, if you add something to, if you're accepting a road, you're increasing the budget, right? Increasing your maintenance budget, it's not removal budget, everything else. You want to defer the board, that's fine.
Rich, you have any comment on this one? As far as FAA's recommendation here?
I thought it would be similar to a planning board article. It's, it's finance appropriation, this is the acceptance of the road, the Board of Selectmen who sit as highway commissioners would, would be the authority. That's, that's sort of how I see it, it, again, if you made an advisory vote in the affirmative, it, it doesn't hurt.
All right. Doesn't hurt.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff could back me up on this, but we already plow and maintain that road anyway.
Yep.
Plowing and maintaining a portion that they just paid to get done, well, they paid. I would have, I can understand what Mr. Root is saying about increasing potential costs down the road, but I would not support, not accepting this road, kind of laid it out there for the residents, if we do, they do A, B, and C, we will support D, doesn't mean town meeting can't put it down, but...
We, we really have, we have no, no money attachment yet necessarily, so, I mean, just wondering.
Jeff already plows and maintains it anyway.
Right.
He's going to be plowing a better road.
Right, so we really don't need a recommendation from FAA for you yet, for...
We can kick it right over to Board of Selectmen, no problem.
Right, does anybody have any objections during that on FAA? All right, let's go to Article Twelve. Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners, Highway Superintendent, St. Anthony Road, St. Anthony's Road Betterment, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer with approval from the Board of Selectmen to borrow seventy-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars, or some such sum to be expended under the control of the Highway Department for improvements to the private way access to St. Anthony Road, including incidental and related costs for said improvements. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is authorized to borrow such sum under the, under inconsistent with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection seven, or any other source of authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore and further, the Board of Selectmen acting pursuant to the authority granted under General Law, Chapter eighty, in the town's Road Betterment Bylaw, shall assess betterments on all properties benefiting from the purpose of recovering the cost thereof, but to take any other action relative thereto. Anybody want to make a motion on this?
Motion to vote in favor of Article Twelve as written.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion on this one? All right, seeing none, we'll call a vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Twelve is recommended by the FAA. All right.
Kick number fifteen, Mr. Chairman, or to the board on it?
Yeah, there's no, no financial recommendation in this whatsoever, so, does anybody on FAA opposed to... In the Selectmen, no recommendation on this? No?
No.
Right? We'll bypass that, is there any other? Articles in here, I think that's it, right, John?
Did we vote on Article Twenty-one before?
My recommendation through the Chair of Article Twenty-one was to refer back to the Water and Sewer Commissioners, because I don't have any information on it, so, you need to make the recommendation in town meeting.
Just not still here, is he?
No.
Nobody's from his department here, all right?
Mr. Chairman.
You have the information on this?
I, I don't, it looks very much that it parallels a two-hundred-thousand-dollar issuance from the Water Department, where it's an asset management that just complemented all of the work that they had done, so...
I'm going to make heads of tails of this, and...
I think the idea is that you've improved the infrastructure, made repairs with state money, this, the, the icing on the cake would be, let's make sure that you know what you have, how you use it, what the schedules were, that's, that's how it reads to me, but I don't have anything. It's the same structure where there was an in-kind payment, you had borrowed some money, reimbursement.
Well, this, an in-kind, what is this in-kind service, the thirty-seven thousand? Is that the water sewer? They're doing work or something?
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's, it's in-kind, so between labor and machinery, thirty-seven thousand would be the town's portion, or the enterprise sewers' portion.
I don't even know, I have no idea what this is, so it's a, it's a study for...
It's a borrowing article, this should be on the capital improvement. I asked about that through the Chair, if it should be on capital improvement, and they didn't think so, the Town Council didn't think so. Town Council didn't think so, neither did the Commissioners, but I don't have any additional information on it, so I, I can't make a recommendation on it, except to refer it back to the Commissioners.
It is, it is a spending, it is a spending article, so, what's anybody's player on this?
Make a recommendation for Article Twenty-one to refer it back to the Water and Sewer Commissioners.
Second for that? All right, we have a second, any discussion on it?
John, what happens if, if, if we were to, of course, we're going to vote on the motion, if we were to pass this over for further information? What happened then?
I mean, I...
Block.
They can force a vote. Defeat the recommendation.
If the FAA recommendation is pass over further information, you're going to get, they'll guarantee you the Water and Sewer Commissioners will stand up and make their case, so we might as well just...
Refer back to them. Prefer to Water.
And I wish they were here tonight to...
Yeah. It seems like we get a lot of these at the last, very last second, walk right in, no communication, spend, 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 spend. All right, we have a, we have a second, is there any other discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, so we'll defer this back to the Water and Sewer Commissioners.
Figured they'd be here.
Yep.
Is that it for FAA?
All right, the only thing I would ask the FAA, Mr. Chairman, is if you would, if you would just take a vote authorizing me to make any sort of changes through the advice of Town Council, to either, well, to the verbiage or the article numbers on the warrant, without changing the intent of the vote.
So you're going to make a new motion to authorize the town administrator and the advice of Town Council or Bond Council?
All right. John, you have these motions?
What's that?
Have these, that, that one, I think you have that.
So you got a piecemeal at the, because you did each one individually?
Oh, we have to...
The motion would read, "I motion to further authorize the town administrator and the advice of Town Council or Bond Council to modify the number of the article, or make any legal corrections to the article text, so long as it does not change or modify the intent of the article as printed and recommended here tonight."
Okay, I make a motion that the FAA further authorize the town administrator on the advice of Town Council or Bond Council to modify the number of the article or make any legal corrections to the article's text, so long as it does not change or modify the intent of the article as printed and recommended here tonight.
Okay, we got a second, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? So you have permission to do what you want? All right, Mr. Chairman, you're, you're next.
So it sounds like Board of Selectmen needs to vote, approve, does that article list now incorrect?
We're going to add the article that was sent to the Board of...
So how about this, one yes, two yes, three yes, four yes, five yes, six yes, seven yes, eight yes, oh, now it's all.
Because you want to authorize these to be put on, placed on the town meeting warrant, so you want to vote for that.
Okay. All articles?
All articles to be placed on the town meeting warrant.
Even the duplicates?
You can go back and you can vote on your recommendations, because you'll be moving, Mr. Chairman, some of the articles here, because it doesn't apply in the other area.
Putting the dupes, Mr. Chairman? All right. Duplicates to...
No, because you just want to get on...
We're going to do that after, okay, same like that, okay.
Do I need a vote, an authorizing vote to place all these on the town meeting warrant for the Board of Selectmen, and please go back and then vote on your recommendations to town meeting?
Anyone got that motion squared away? This one?
Suggested motion.
I move that the Board of, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen moved, wrote in favoring, in favor of approving articles, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, as printed in the May eighth, twenty twenty-three, draft town meeting warrant for placement on the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three annual town meeting warrant, and further authorize the town administrator on the advice of Town Council or Bond Council to modify the number of the article or make any legal corrections to the article text, including removing any article that's not required on the advice of Council, so long as it does not change or modify the intent of the article as printed and recommended here tonight. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
John, FAA.
Hey, now you'd like us to, we had a question on the vote taken on ballot, question one from the May fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, sounds like we had a scripner's error?
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, if you could go back and just vote on your recommendations, or, or we could do it before town meeting if you want. Let's do it before town meeting.
Sure.
What do you mean recommendations?
The ones that got bounced.
The ones that you're going to have to make a motion to.
We can do, we can do it then?
We can do it then.
It's okay?
Just recommendations, that's nothing to do with it.
How many are out there, or should we just do it now?
Sure. Who's got the list?
I've got a list.
Give us the most for us, please.
So the first one is town reports, that's the FAA's recommendation, next one is here, committee recommendation, FAA's recommendation, twenty-four budgets offset, revolving funds is offset by FAA, fund recertification FAA, fund cyclical FAA, Board of Selectmen... Board of Selectmen, regulatory compliance mitigation and response, that's FAA recommendation. Town accounting unpaid bills, that's FAA's recommendation. Board of Selectmen, high school feasibility study, that's FAA's recommendation. Agricultural Commission fundraising, that's FAA's recommendation, except for portion of Partridge Hill. You can vote on that one.
11 and 12. Town administrator.
11, 12, 13, 15. 16 through 19. As long as the board agrees, we're gonna refer those back to the refer back to planning board. 11 is gonna be referred back to... That's an FAA motion that we're gonna refer it back to the commissioners. And then 21. Yeah, I'm sorry, 21, you're right. 21 and then...
20, right?
20. Refer back to petitioner. 24. Recommend, recommend approval. So 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 through 19 is refer back to planning board. 24 is recommend approval. And 21 is to refer back, is FAA is gonna refer back to commissioners, so. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. 15 through 19 is refer back to planning board. 24 is recommend approval. So you're gonna vote on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Six and a half.
Mr. Massey. You wanna do all at once, Mr. Chairman, or?
It's the board's pleasure.
Board's pleasure.
I stole that line from you.
I think you did. Which I stole from Sully.
Do it all at once.
All right. Mr. Chairman. These are approval. Can I break them up into the, into the ones we have?
Yep. You're just recommending approval for the, for the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval for Articles 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. 24 is printed.
Thank you.
Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Mr. Chairman. I move that we refer to the planning board Articles 16, 17, 18, and 19 as written in the warrant.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. And 21, they already did, right? The water sewer one?
Yep.
We have to make the same recommendation, or FAA already took care of that?
FAA is gonna take care of it. Okay. Mr. Chairman, thanks for everyone's patience so far. There's about one person left in the room. No, I'm kidding.
Thank you for those holding out with us.
Yep. So the next item, Mr. Chairman, we're asking if there was a scrivener's error, it was, it was an and instead of an or. Town councils thought it wouldn't be a big deal, but we're gonna revoke to the next, the next ballot question. So we might as well revoke both of them to make it nice and clean. So last week, we voted to have the, send the proposition to an F override to the ballot. I was gonna ask the board to do a new motion correcting the scrivener's error for ballot question. We're almost done.
Okay. So this is the restatement of the vote of ballot question one? And this is the right one, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, printed.
Want to read the whole thing?
Yes, please.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve a proposition to an F override ballot question for insertion on the June 12, 2023 town election ballot and to transmit same to the town clerk as of this date as follows. Shall the town of Dudley be allowed to assess an additional $2,668,797 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of operational expenses for the town of Dudley in the amount of $1,674,514 and for the purposes of operational expenses for the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District in the amount of $994,283 the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023? And further, that said question shall be deemed approved if a majority of the persons shall vote yes.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
The next one, Mr. Chairman. We previously approved, it had been checked by town council, voted, and sent to the ballot. Town clerk doesn't have to have it until tonight. Just before the last meeting, bond council weighed in and had a few more tweaks, so I'm hoping that we can revoke the second question, which is the capital outline. I provided a motion for your use of restating the question.
You want to?
This is my question two.
Yeah.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve proposition two and a half capital outline expenditure exclusion ballot question for insertion on the June 12, 2023 town election ballot and to transmit same to the town clerk as of this date as follows. Shall the town of Dudley be allowed to assess an additional $463,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the town's share of the cost of a high school feasibility study by the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District as required under the Massachusetts School Building Authority School Building Grant Program and as recommended by the Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School Committee for the fiscal year beginning July 11, 2023? And further, that said question shall be deemed approved if a majority of the persons shall vote yes.
Second. A motion is second, any other discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. It says majority of persons vote yes, but it's a two-thirds majority vote. Are those two-thirds by the Board of Selectmen?
It's two-thirds to transmit any ballot questions.
Right, and it says some majority.
And I will make sure that it says and further, that said question shall be deemed approved if a majority of the persons shall vote yes.
Okay.
Is that okay with Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Because I think we said in, instead of if, it's approved if a majority of the persons shall vote yes. Okay?
Right.
Is that it for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. All right, that's it for that, right? New business now?
All right. Yes, please.
New business, May 22, 2023. ATM warrant is voted by FAA and Board of Selectmen for quiet or any action thereto.
We're all set with that?
We're all set, okay. So that's the new business. Onto appointments. Deb Johnson, appointment as Dudley's SCM Elder Bus Representative, term expired June 30, 2024. It's the board's pleasure.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Fair or second?
Second. Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstain? Unanimous. Jennifer Fitzgerald, temporary reappointment as Animal Control Officer Inspector of Animals, term to expire July 1, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, we're asking for a temporary appointment that expires July 1, because that's one of the positions that if the override doesn't pass, will be cut July 1.
Motion? Mr. Massey.
Make a motion.
Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Chairman?
Yes.
That means the override fails. You will not have a animal inspector?
We'll be looking to find a different way to do it, Mr. Chairman, which, I mean, Mr. Sullivan, which is in process. Maybe a pay-as-you-go type situation in a neighboring town. Hasn't been determined yet.
So the applicant would have to pay whatever the fee is for that present inspection?
Most, potentially, that would be what would happen.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
For me? No. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You voted second. Voted second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, unanimous. Layout of Partridge Hill Road? Mr. Town Administrator? Layout of Partridge Hill Road?
So this has been sent back, Michelle, from the planning board to be sent, to be approved by the Board of Selectmen?
Yep.
It should be in the One Drive, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing?
If you recall, we sent it back to the planning board to be laid out.
Do you want me to open a hearing?
I think it just requires a vote. I don't think it requires a hearing.
We already did the hearing.
It's for public input.
Per the planner, town planner.
For the planner. All right, so the...
We'll be looking to get a vote to approve the layout of Partridge Hill.
Motion in the One Drive?
The layout should be in the One Drive, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
This also necessitates the board by law has to go out, I believe, walk it, right? Not necessarily as a board, but everybody should make a effort to go out and check it out. Have it up there a couple of times already. Couple weeks ago when it was pouring, so.
Sorry. I looked up what it first, but done. Haven't been there since. Mr. Chairman, we'll move this to the meeting before the town meeting, and we'll take one.
Okay.
We'll have the document.
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Is that it? This is a simple vote, right?
It's a simple vote. But I want everybody to see the layout before you vote on it.
Okay.
We don't have the layout.
It's really simple.
I don't see it anymore.
Is it, do we have it somewhere we can?
Yeah, it's in my, I don't have access to my...
We'll do it before, it's fine. We can do it before the town meeting.
We'll move this to the next meeting. Old business, Highway Superintendent, update on Brandon Road Mill Ray's Bridge.
So the only update I have, tomorrow, the project manager from Piscuazi construction, Piscuazi demolition who will be doing the work is gonna come out and survey the site, mark out for dig safe and preparation to start. And the demolition should they're going to give me a schedule, but within a week or two, they'll be beginning on the demolition, so. I'll have a further update at the next meeting.
Want to do your department communication same time?
That's about all I have for, for tonight.
All right, thank you. Town Administrator's evaluation.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna push this out again. We have, there's a lot going on right now. We spoke with the town administrator earlier, and let's get, we do need to do this. End of the busy year is coming up, but let's get through the the rest of the business. Get that, get the template sent out to everybody again. And we'll do that at the meeting. We're all here. Good with you guys?
Yep.
Yeah, get the template, we'll all work on it.
Yep.
All right. Chief? Chief? Jeff said nothing. Rich?
You can't hear the guy that just said something. Actually, I can, but not tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right, George isn't here. That's everybody, right? Okay. Board, student rep, she was here, I believe. All right, it's only, it's like midnight, right? No, it's only 8:30. So let's go to board member comments. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank everybody for showing up tonight, being patient, all the hard work that went into this. FAA, capital improvement, department heads, residents. Great job, Mr. Chair for the board, Town Administrator. Amazing work. I'm very, very happy with the results. And I hope we have a good week. Everybody can enjoy it. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Much the same, Mr. Landry. Thank everybody for participating in the budget process. Hasn't been easy, one of the more difficult ones since I've been involved. Covered a lot of ground tonight, there's a lot of information out there. Hopefully, some of the things that Mr. Weaver touched on, regards to the PFAS. I'll lay some of the information that may be floating out there. It may not be 100% accurate. Again, your best avenue is to approach the town, come to me, get your answers. And in light of Mother's Day coming up, I'd like to wish everyone in advance Happy Mother's Day, those that are, those that may someday. Happy Mother's Day. We all had a mother at one point.
Mr. Signovich.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say thank you to Dudley Little League for inviting us to take part in their opening day ceremonies, the parade, the fields look great. That's how things happen, when people just show up and volunteer their time for the greater good, good things happen. Again, thank you to them for having us.
Mr. Massey.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thanks to the Capital Improvement Committee, the FAA. Did a great job, you know, getting through a lot of the, you know, what seems like minutia, but it's things that we need to get through, so I appreciate everybody's patience. That's, you know, how the sausage gets made, so to speak, but it's, it's critical that we do it the right way. Yes, Kerry, thank you for mentioning the Little League. That was a great experience, and a positive experience, right? It's not all negative things that, you know, get talked about. There's also a lot of positive things happening, and we're ready to call that out. You know, Dudley pride, right? We're all proud of our town and the things that happen. Another, the last thing is, is one of the things I saw, I just think needs to be clarified. I just want to ask the town administrator a question about there's some potential misinformation out there, but what happens if this override passes? What happens in year two with the funds, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Town Administrator? Can you explain to the people at home, like, how that really works?
Year one, legally, it's legally required that those funds be used for the intent voted, if the prop two and a half override would have passed. In year two, I can't imagine that, that either the town or department head or the school, or the district would forget that they passed an override the year before and do anything more than request it either in the district assessment or or in the, in the departmental budget. The good news is that on the municipal side, we've projected a budget out for five or six years. And we, so I know what, what the budget is gonna be for the department heads for the next five or six years, pending any, you know... heads for the next five or six years, pending any, you know, unforeseen circumstances. So we know where it's, where the, where the money's going to go on the municipal side, and I'm pretty sure that the district is going to remember that they passed an override for their side, and will continue to request that same amount plus two and a half percent or more every year.
Yes.
Did I answer the question?
No, that, that answers the question. I just want, you know, I think the fact that, you know, it can go into the general fund and be spent for other purposes, and anybody up here can make motions to do such a thing is kind of, kind of crazy in my, in my book, so I just wanted to, uh, make sure we talk about that.
Well, we've shrunk in the override, Mr. Through the chair, Mr. Massey, $200,000 since we began this process. $200,000 on the municipal side alone. We started at 1.8, we're at 1.6 now. There's no extra money, if it passes, it's not going to be hidden anywhere. It's all allocated and appropriated into future budgets, right?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sullivan.
And the second half of that answer is you want to see how your town money's spent, you want to make sure it's spent right. Come to the town meeting and vote. That's the only way you can ensure that the budget that is proposed that potentially passed, funds go where they're supposed to go. If you don't come, 65, 85 people show up, 7,500 missing out on a good civics lesson.
Just that I think that as long as I would, I, I can't speak for you guys, but I think I can, you know, as long as I'm in the seat, I would never, like, support, like, moving money out of what the, what the voters said that it was supposed to be used for, so, period.
Right, it's credibility.
Credibility. Thank you, and Happy Mother's Day.
Uh, thank you, everybody. Hopefully the sound was better tonight. Uh, I think, uh, yep. You, you look at those vol, volunteers at the, uh, the Little League field, uh, it's not, uh, it's definitely done a little better than, uh, than maybe some of us were on the board a long time ago. Uh, but it looks great. Um, really nice job by all those volunteers, and the veterans are there. Mr. Landry, your veterans are there, so thank you. Uh, it was, it was a great day, beautiful weather. That's all I have. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So move second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, unanimous.
Thank you, everybody, aye.